Did you already know? She agreed to the email.
Oh, okay.
And then I also wanted to know if she was going to stat about she got that email from the state. So I was on the satisfaction. Can I scan all those documents I got? I thought exactly the other document. Put it in the can.
I uh I've been watching our tutorials on finding it. I want to see how they'll tell us. Overview, overarching reports, stuff. I just don't know if it'll be able to read.
Oh, yes.
It is amazing.
Oh, yes.
I've seen our shit under sorts.
Um, I've taken pictures of um.
Just make it clear.
Cars on motors that I can't read.
Yeah.
Picture of it.
Really?
Probably puts the information together and fills the bin and.
I mean now they're talking about. They have one that you can.
What's the deal? Apparently.
I think that's.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Oh, okay. And then we can dump off the loss. That I wanna put those into AI. Cause she just asked that being.
Just take a picture.
I'm just gonna put it in the. Report to see with that overview.
Let it project or recommend or. I just didn't hear the AI part.
I know, that's why I was giving.
We were both angry by the end of the day.
I've done that too much. Doing it that way, they get so mad.
I don't know if I've ever seen it.
Oh, really?
I don't own it like that.
Oh, my.
And I'm like, ah, you know.
Such. Seen that series of them. Swatting.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, I want to see that. We're at six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call me for order. Or budget workshop, excuse me, for order. Uh, no call, please.
You know, I mean. Yeah, I'm trying to find a recording. So I guess we just won't do the meeting.
Oops.
I just.
Said you were hungry. Something under a snicker.
Yeah.
Annoying.
Here, here.
Gaston. There we go. Okay. Gaston.
Yeah.
Dean.
Here.
Grant. Here. Paige. All right, we'll go ahead and move to the moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge, will you just? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the lawn library. It's also available in pamphlet form. Upon request at City Hall and can be found on the link provided in the agenda. We'll go ahead and move to discuss the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six budget for golf first, and then we'll move to general. Golf, would you like to come forward?
Is this our table?
It may be, yes.
We have tables. We found the best table that there was.
What, clients?
We found the best table there was.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
What I handed out to you is Mark's work copy in the right hand corner. This is a work in progress. And I went over it with our golf board. Also talked to Terry several times. It's it's hard to match up expenditures, especially with the categories that are here. But anyway, first, you know, Terry put together two years ago budget, two years ago expenses, last year budget, last year expenses, current budget. So. This is just a work copy. It hasn't been reviewed by the board, the golf board, and would be subject to their review, approval, recommendation, I guess. We can go through the the various items and discuss them, but the summary of the estimated revenue is three hundred and two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. And you find, I guess that's on page three. And then on page six, page number one, that's where I put it. Of the expenditures are two hundred and seventy two thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. And if you subtract expenditures from projected expenditures from projected revenue, you've got a positive twenty nine thousand, seven twenty two.
And this is working off of this year's numbers, right?
Pardon?
This is working off of this year's numbers, the revenue that you're alluding to.
Well, to a certain extent, because we don't know.
Sure.
We, pretty well, we know what the membership fees are, and we know what the golf storage or the cart storage is.
Sure.
The eighteen and nineteen. And then we've actually got two tournaments that are scheduled for the next, well, three weeks.
Right, you're always having that.
Yeah.
So is this just what it is today, or is it projected?
It's it's projected.
Okay.
Let's, what I did, let's go through, if you look on page two, we got eighteen hole receipts. I just used an average, what happened a year ago and what happened a year before that. And you can double fifteen five.
Okay.
The liquor sales, again, we had two years ago thirty four thousand, and last year it was only twenty one. And so I used an average, and I got average out there on in the margin.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Beverage, same food concessions, rain balls, everything's an average there. Now, I did add, if you go back to page one, we added debt proceeds. In other words, I'm not sure what's left on that line of credit that we got established several years ago with the security first bank Crawford branch. But then we got grant proceeds. And of course, it'd already been thirteen hundred and ninety dollars received grants. But you gotta put them in revenue, and you gotta put them in expenses, or else you can't can't spend them if you do get them. So. At the bottom, page one, we've got, those are pretty firm figures. We've got golf cart storage and golf memberships. And.
We're actually looking at more golf courses. That. Golf cart storage.
Could you add it to?
Well, not only that, but men's league is looking to help us build on to make more roller carts. So men's league is, men's league is gonna put the bill for that.
Could help me.
So hopefully, if I remember right through conversations, that's, it's gonna add ten card spots. If I remember right. And I know that there's a waiting list for people already, and we've had, I don't think there's ten, but
We think they'll get it done.
It's men's league. When they put their, when they put their brain to it, it will get done fast. It's just when, most of men's league is ranchers. And so they're very busy, except for on Tuesday nights right now. And that's when men's league is right now. So they're not busy on Tuesday nights, except for golfing. So when everything slows down, I, I, I think, I think from what I understand through rumblings, because they mostly talk through Fay, that it would be done before next year.
Well, and even if it's not, even if it's just next year, that's still a plus of what we not expecting, so that's still good.
Right.
So the nine hole receipts, is that for people that are not members, and they just come to play nine holes?
Yes.
On the first page, yeah. So memberships are forty five, and then you have a lot more people, I guess, that come in and. Right?
A lot of people from the fort, and people from Elias, and people from Shagger.
Okay.
People from.
We're actually getting more and more people that come. The more we keep the course up, the more people have golf literature.
Sure, that's great. Okay, so that plus that is fourteen hundred and four thousand. I'm just looking at, for some reason, liquor beer sales, which is too big. Average lives is twenty seven, forty four thousand. Six seventy one thousand? So almost everybody's drink, having a drink, lots like there, right?
Yeah. Well, and a lot of people drink, a lot of people drink at tournaments. We make a lot of our booze sales at tournaments.
Yeah, well, why on the liquor sales was it? So I'm just back to page two. Liquor sales. Two years ago, it was thirty four thousand one thirty eight, and this year it was only twenty one?
Last year.
That's the last year.
Yep, that's last season.
So what happened last year?
Probably just didn't, probably just didn't, probably just didn't have as much play.
Okay.
Golf is like anything, so, I mean, not everybody is a golfer that comes.
Right. Well, and then if you look at the next item line, I have forty of them.
And we, we might have had, so you might have had, it was a lot more beer. Well, we might have had one or two weddings in there two years ago, as opposed to last year where we didn't have a wedding.
And it was bad, I mean, the weather wasn't very good.
Well, but you'd be surprised at how much money you make off of wedding and booze compared to.
But if you look at the next line, I have not beer sales, it only goes from forty five to forty three, so it didn't have near the impact that the liquor did, so it's.
Yeah, so.
Which that's why I believe it's probably a party, yeah, parties, sure. Which, which would be right. Or last year, they didn't have post playhouse out there after plays.
That's been very liquid for us this year.
Right, last year, they didn't have post playhouse after the fir, the opening night of plays, and they would drink a lot of liquor. And this year, they came back. So.
Every Friday.
Is it every Friday now?
And well, that's what it was set up for.
Well, the year before, it was just the, the night of ev, of the opening of every play. And then they would kind of come and go as, as whatever, but the big Monday night was, like they would have, they would have.
My understanding, and, and John is this year's understanding, my understanding is it was supposed to be every Friday night this year's, you know, ten o'clock to, to one AM, but they were gonna have food and stuff for one, two?
No, no, no.
They were bringing.
It's just the opening night of that play. So say Newsies opened, it was their first night of the play, play was over, they have dinner, and they go there and drink.
I thought for sure Newsies said it was every Friday, but, okay.
That's a good idea, though.
But, but that also being said, like you just said, they had a lot more doing that, they had a lot more people from the post playhouse, a lot more of those actors that would come in there and drink on their own. Because they felt more comfortable going in there after that to just go in and drink as opposed to go into either one of the bars.
And, and let me just add what might help you guys, and I brought copies if you guys need them. I printed out the latest budget worksheet. The one they worked off was June. If you look at, at the one I gave you tonight, you'll see the numbers, so if you go to that second page where you were questioning over there, so you'll be able to see, so, you know, beer is double, then what is showing is expended here to the.
Well, so is the liquor.
Yeah, so that.
So it's just been that short time, it's already picked up.
Yeah, because June, right, then we had all of July and part, so.
So we're really on our way to those averages, it looks like, so.
Yes, I think so.
I know.
I just was comparing it, I think definitely.
Nice.
But still no golf closing cycles under apparel.
Oh, it's under apparel?
I just did it on the computer, so I'm gonna look that up.
Golf closing sales, there's nothing.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Forty, forty nine.
Yeah.
Thirty three, forty, forty nine.
It's at the golf pro shop?
Yeah.
Pro shop. Thirty three, four, forty, forty five.
Resale pro shop?
No.
Well, the revenue, it's, yeah.
Page two. Page three, resale pro shop, I think is where it was put.
Well, there's this golf pro shop, I've got it on page.
Resale pro shop is the expense to buy the supplies.
Oh, that's the, I don't.
No, that, that's.
Like you said, five.
If you look on page two, right in the kind of in the middle, you got thirty three, four, forty, forty five.
Yeah.
That whole golf pro shop.
Yeah.
Okay, so the number two on her updated budget is there, they've already sold four thousand one hundred, so it's up from the eight sixty. But that's a good supplement. So that, the last two tournaments have made a big impact, so that's good.
Yeah.
I know that she's sold a lot of golf balls with here. And she marks those up like crazy.
That's, and I've been told that too, very good. Sell, for some reason, we're selling golf balls.
Great.
Because the roughs of them, why you get.
Actually.
Aren't you supposed to stay out of the rough? I don't golf, don't you stay out of the rough?
The rough, yeah, the rough's pretty high.
Supposed to.
Which, I mean, that, that's fine, you're not supposed to hit your ball in the rough.
And I have to stay higher, it's gonna dry out and die.
Yes, it is, that time of year.
Whether people like it or not, whether they have ground grass or tall green grass.
Any other specific questions?
You wanna go over anything expense wise?
Yes.
I'm just, John, I'm sorry, you have not applicable, not applicable on the retirement and the employee benefits.
Well, the reason I did that is because I added it into the compensation package.
I see.
And I didn't, I didn't have time this afternoon. I planned on working on this, and it was about quarter after four before I got.
Oh, right, that's all right, I just.
Anyway, let's go to expenses, there's thirty three fifty seven ten. And that's booze and fees clubhouse. You'll see there I noted four hundred and ten dollars times twelve, that is the light speed monthly charge. And then Terry and I were looking at it, and they also process the, clear the credit card charges. And they charge two point six percent, and then one, is it ten cents per?
Transaction.
Transaction, transaction, so. Supposedly, they're collecting four percent at the point of sale.
So we started looking into that some more today, too, trying to, because I was telling Jane how I found that, and how we could see the difference from the two point whatever and the four percent. And we started trying to figure it out in light speed, but we didn't.
Well, we need, yeah.
Find the report we would need for that.
We need to find out, because the difference of one point four, does that add up to four percent? Two six.
Yeah, one point four.
Would be.
Of just credit card fees.
Yeah, it would be a revenue. But one, are they charging it on, on all transactions? And two, if they are, then how does light speed handle it? Do they, they?
Yeah, we started in the.
Just take the two point six plus one by ten cents per transaction, so that's something.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be a big item, but it adds up.
Interesting to see how they do it. I know with the credit card company that we have, it's, it's just straight from the credit card to us. We don't have like a light speed subscription that's the middleman, so that might make it difficult. But we do get a monthly summary of, well, for example, our system, you've got to charge today, and then at midnight tonight, it's deposited in our account. And then ours is three point seven percent of whatever the total charge is, is what they make. And so they don't charge us a per transaction. But it's, it is figured in the statement that they give us every month, so at the, every month, they'll, they'll email me a statement, and it'll have broke down, you know, eight thirteen charge, you had two charges, this is the percentage we took, this is the percentage that is the sale, and then the total amount.
Yeah, that would be the.
So I don't, maybe, maybe like, so you can help us find some sort of statement review or something?
We, we need to call it, because we went searching.
That might help to find yourself.
So that's something that needs to be further investigated.
Yeah.
The other thing is page three. The thing is, the expenditure at the golf course is wages, clubhouse wages and and outside wages. So. What I did is, of course, the minimum wage is going to fifteen, and then if you have a three percent increase on fifteen, it's another fifty cents, so if you use fifteen fifty, that's kind of a base wage. And then based upon the, I went back and looked the hours that Fay worked last year, and I increased them a little. So he, he has a thousand hours, and Fred has eleven hundred hours, but Fred gets seventeen fifty, I think. I'm sure I had it somewhere, but I didn't.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he, Fay's at thirteen fifty, Fred's at fourteen.
Yeah, but next year, it's, he's definitely gonna have to be at fifteen.
Will have to be.
So you seventeen fifty. So if you add those, you got nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty for Fred, and you got fifteen thousand, five hundred for Fay. Okay. Amanda's total compensation package, and this includes retirement, insurance, well, half lack is paid, but, but there's a, a month, monthly stipend, Blue Cross Blue Shield, three hundred and fifty dollars a month. And that, that's part of the package. The pension, right now, is a three percent, three percent match, and that's fourteen hundred and forty three. And then there's a hundred and fifty six dollars for life insurance. And then the employers, FICA, they wrote that, what are they called, it's thirty six eighty two, and the base salary is forty eight thousand, one hundred and thirty one. So if you add those up, which I did, it comes to the fifty seven thousand, six thirteen. And then I, I put a three percent in there, and that's seventeen hundred and twenty eight. Now, that's a little off, because I meant three percent to the, well, it would be there, I guess, in the retirement. The stipend for health insurance, I guess that it should be that far, maybe the, the Aflac might not change. But anyway, take the fifty seven, and you can write this down, fifty seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars, total compensation package with a three percent increase. Okay? I'm sorry. But it ought to be fifty seven, six thirteen, which is this year. And then add seventeen twenty eight, which is the three percent of it. So it's fifty nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. If you divide that by twelve, that's forty nine hundred and forty five dollars a month. And you take, if you take March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, that's a month before the season starts, which is April first, it's a month after the season's over, which is October first, to winterize, et cetera. If, if, so that's eight months, or two thirds of a year. Now, if you, if you do that, then the wage or wages that are applicable to the golf course are only thirty nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. And the balance then would be the other three months.
And then, so you took the thirty nine, five, three sixty, plus the other two, and that's how you came to the seventy four, thirteen, three, ten?
It'd be thirty nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Right, for Amanda, and then you added the other two in, and that's how you got the seventy four, three, ten on item.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't under, yeah, nineteen, two fifty.
Just wanted to double check. Sure. Yeah.
And fifteen, five hundred.
And then what were the, the other twos, Fred and?
Well, I used a thousand hours for, for Fay.
Sure.
At fifteen fifty. And eleven hundred hours for Fred at seventeen fifty. And I had had last year's, and there was some overtime, but last season, the total hours for outside employees was nineteen hundred and forty point five hours. But that was just, that was just Fay and, and Fred, because there was no hours for Amanda.
Yeah.
And.
There were. Just didn't get that.
Right, but they weren't paid as hours, they were paid as salary.
As salary.
Correct.
So the total hours. Uh, so the total hours inside was twenty-nine hundred and sixty-nine. And of that, three hundred and twenty-one were overtime hours. And there was only thirty-six overtime hours for Fred and I don't know how it came about or why, but.
And that's last year's.
This year, the understanding is you're not gonna have overtime hours in the clubhouse, but.
That's right.
And I think we're doing okay. So those are the hours I used.
Okay. Thank you for those calculations.
And then the payroll taxes, I u- you just take point seven six five. Seven point six five and and that's what I did there. Uh, Amanda first, that's with the per per budget, so to speak, which is uh well, plug in the greens and vehicle repair, uh, building repairs, major irrigation, turf uh maintenance, which is basically fertilizer, thirty-five hundred, irrigation maintenance. And then we got bed supplies like bed knives, equipment repair, uh, and.
I think you do a rundown if you had questions about it, basically.
Sure.
What the money would be spent for.
Sure.
I have it all broke down. Um, if you needed to know what it needed to be spent on.
Sure, sure.
Um, really quick, I'll go back to the breakdown of the outside, uh, outside major, just really quick, and I I just wanna verify something. Uh, on Amanda's original job description, do we have that broke down to be a four month versus eight month position?
I I don't know, all I know is that the full compensation package is now charged to the golf course budget.
So it probably was not set up to be a four versus eight month. My my only concern with that and the reason why I bring it up is I I worry about about the impact of changing one's position and one's job description when they've already been hired. And technically that would change the job description to say that she's no longer working for the golf course for those four months and she's only working for the city at that time. Um, I just don't know that I have concern that I want it to be considered, and if that's the direction that we want to go, then we need to go about that appropriately.
Mm-hmm, I don't disagree, you need to talk to your attorney.
Yeah.
And then the way I work will be different as well because I put in a lot of free time then to the golf course.
Yeah, sure.
If if you would actually look at my hours that I put in, John. I mean.
Exactly, because you've got comp hours that are gonna be calculated on the summertime that are gonna be, that make this out of your pension in a way for the winter.
Because I don't want, I don't want to be paid for time and a half work, because I don't want to screw over the course by any means. Um.
It it'll just need to make sure that we're we're we consider all that, like if it's not.
But I think it's weird that all of a sudden the I'm the problem out there when it wasn't a problem. When the person before me got paid more than me and it wasn't a problem. But that's not the place to argue about it. So, I mean, I'll do what I'm told because I have a mortgage to pay either way, so.
So let me get this straight, instead of being paid overtime, you you're not paying.
I'm paying salary.
She knows she's out here, but would you be entitled to your hours, your PTO or something?
Not small, but she doesn't fall by the. Time and a half.
Pardon?
Do you get PTO or comp time for those hours then in the winter?
No.
No.
It's not a direct comp time, but it's considered when we when we set when we set the position up as salary, that's how we want it to be covered. Knowing that she generates a lot of comp time hours in the summer and that they're rewarded would be.
And whatever, Tim needs help in the winter time.
And she has come in and helps, you know, the class now and what whatnot, um, to be an assistance for the city.
Gotcha.
Um, but that's how the job was structured when she was hired. And I just, I I wanna make sure that we proceed in a way and that we don't put the cart ahead of the horse and structure this in a way that's gonna backfire if, I just, I I don't know that that's appropriate to just take somebody mid mid position, change their position and expect them to either accept it or start over, like, like. I have reason for caution concern. So I just, I wanna make sure that that the golf course board understands that we understand what you're proposing. I just don't know that we can accept it until we have verification that that is possible.
And I understand that, but we gotta start somewhere.
Sure. Sure, sure. No, and 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 this is, I mean, if this is the request that you guys wanna make to head in that direction, um, it will just need to take the opportunity to discuss that with Adam and to see what's possible in that direction.
Are we talking about her having a ninety-month work year?
It would, no, no, it would ultimately change, her job description is what it comes down to.
No.
She would, what they're proposing is that she would be a golf course uh employee eight months of the year. And in the off season, the other four months of the year, she would be a just as strictly a city employee.
Oh, I see.
And so that that drastically changes the job description from what it was initially um structured and what she was hired under.
So then what did she, are we looking at taking her office salary where she was during overtime for all the hours?
That's something else to consider, because if you're gonna do that, that that changes things drastically, especially where it was set up to be salary because of the hours that are produced in and worked in the summer, um, for it to be more affordable throughout the year.
Yeah.
Um, and not such a heavy impact on both the golf course and the city. So it's it's, it is proposed and and, I mean, if if the golf course wants to see that change, that's fair for them to propose that.
We can certainly.
But I I just wanna put the forewarning out there that that's at this time, we can't compete that and that that's something that will need to be advised.
I mean, there might, there might be work during the exercise of looking at all the hours, because she tracks all of her hours, even, I mean, even though she's she's hourly
Right.
and they're on her timesheets, so we can actually see how many hours she's puts in during the golf season. And then see how that spreads out over a year, you know, versus her going to overtime or type of thing.
Yeah, that that's something that should be put together because it is a factor in making the final decision as to what.
I agree. And and as an individual who was a part of that original structure, that job description when we hired Amanda, we did do the math. And that's something that we felt was in the best interest of the city to structure as a salary position because of that factor.
Yeah, salary.
So at that, at the time of hi- of structuring Amanda's position and hiring that position and and her coming on, that's what the city had in mind at the time. City council, I can say, is that, from my perspective and what I know.
I have a question completely off.
Sure.
Topic of the wage, or comment, I guess. Um, I did some more checking into and I would like to change one of my numbers, it would be uh sixty-two oh four. John, also on your page, uh.
Page one.
Yes, page four.
Mm-hmm.
There you go.
Good.
Should be in sixty-two oh four.
Clear at the bottom.
Should be at the bottom.
Yes, sir. Um, I did some checking in and um I would like to raise that number from what we proposed at thirty-five hundred to forty-two hundred.
Which would make sense because you're already at thirty-eight sixty-eight. Um, updated, how many updated numbers, so that would make sense.
Our greens are starting to be a hit to other customers. Therefore, we need to start putting more, we need to start putting more into them, and greens fertilizer. And.
And we'll increase it to what?
Forty-two hundred.
Good.
And we'll have to put a preventative stuff on it in the spring as opposed to the fertilizer that we normally put. And I got a better understanding of the price on it actually last night. So when I come up with these figures two months ago, that was on track, but now, as of last night.
Sure.
John, I see that you took zeroed out um the what's fifty-six fifty lease.
No, I have no idea what it is. It could have been light speed or the prior point of sale.
No, the the lease, I thought we were, we were talking about golf carts.
Six.
Or did we put that somewhere else?
No. Uh.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six fifty lease purchase? Yeah, lease golf carts. Where did you put that, because I didn't write anything.
That should be in there, should.
If you're gonna do it.
That's where it should be, yeah.
Wow.
So we were talking about, should it be under fifty-six fifty?
Yeah, lease slash purchase, I would think.
Well, we put it somewhere because I wrote it down too. It might have been equipment.
Four thousand, I don't know, about a thousand dollars per.
But we might have.
So where did I put the not applicable, what page?
No.
At the top of.
Okay.
Well.
Rental rental?
What's what's the the accounting?
So he was talking about, we didn't put any thing in there.
We look up what it.
Oh, this is the old, you know, lease.
Fifty-six fifty?
Yeah, because they, they were on page four.
So the issue is, is all of our cart, I think our newest carts are two thousand threes.
No, our newest carts are like twelve.
Is it twelve?
Those are, our oldest golf carts are two thousand.
Like they're closer to eighteen or nineteen.
Our old, yeah, our oldest carts are two thousand two, and we have four of those left.
So the the discussion was that that we don't have enough. Um, we should, we should have two carts, a minimum of two carts per hole available, right? And um, and especially when we have terminals and things like that.
So how many carts do we have now?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixty?
Sixteen.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So we're looking, we're looking for, we increase the fleet to.
That wouldn't be under equipment repair price, the six thousand there is, that's for me, that's all.
But it was nine hundred and some odd dollars per. Well, actually, then with the uh the oil change kit, I think it came out right out to a thousand.
I think it even almost a thousand?
Yeah, it was a thousand bucks a piece, maybe a thousand ten or something like that.
I I was gonna say, I thought we settled on a thousand the other night.
Would you put it under debt service, sixty-nine hundred?
No, I said, no, under fifty-six fifty, but.
Correct, correct, but if if, I mean, would they have actually put it under debt service instead of fifty-six fifty, that maybe were, it was, because there's fifty-one eighty-five there.
But we are talking about.
But that looks like it has been something for a while, so I don't know what that would be.
Debt service should be the credit line one.
Yeah, it's a, it's a protocol, clubhouse loan and putting a tractor in there and some other shit.
Okay.
Yeah, what is capital improvements for?
Well, if they're gonna, if the, well, if the Minsley builds that, that doesn't need to come through the city's department, so that
that's fine.
Wouldn't be that. Um, but yeah, what what are your intentions for capital improvements?
John?
Hmm?
Line item thirty-three dash six eight five zero capital improvements, you have thirteen thousand listed, what's, what, what is, what do you have list, or what do you have?
Mm-hmm. Well, they've been talking about, one, they they need a larger mower.
Okay.
And we're, and you know, there's always things that come up. So like I said, they're they're in on both sides, revenue.
Sure, sure.
So, um, I guess your concern would be if you approve it, then they go out and buy it, but uh, that that wouldn't have, I mean, it's still gonna have to go through the process of being approved.
Right, right.
And then actually, you know, uh, the golf cart uh lease costs, although it's normal that a capital improvement would be something that's depreciable and have a life more than one one year, so.
Right.
So if you went from sixteen to twenty, and it's a thousand hours, so you'd have a bigger mower.
So you're suggesting putting the lease under the capital improvements?
Fifty-six fifty. Pardon? That'd go under fifty-six fifty.
No. Yes, that's what I thought, okay.
So in that thirteen thousand capital outlay, we have, did I hear a mower or a blower?
A blower.
That's what I wanted, a blower.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the one that.
And the blower's thirteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, the one that we got donated is um doesn't push enough air to really do the good job and um.
It's only a blower.
I guess. Wasn't there a mower that we needed too at one point?
Oh, yeah.
Is that included in here, like a used mower or something? I know you talked about that.
I don't really, we talked about, I don't know where that got put because when we did this stuff the other night, we talked about putting up some money, just throwing in some money for a used mower and uh splitting the cost of a sprayer too. But I don't know where those numbers got put.
They do, if they're anywhere, they're in the thirteen thousand.
And as far as park, um, I spoke to you after we get the park, so we can consider that in the final. Amanda had suggested, you know, Park had wanted last year, um, to buy the UTV and the sprayer. And if they need to spray out the golf course too, maybe we could come up with a setup that each division pays half and then they could share it and that. Didn't sound like a terrible idea either, so.
And I don't know if the cemetery has some money to throw in there.
Correct, right, we could, we could pull from that too. Would that affect, and and you can tell me if you're comfortable with this or not, would that affect the way it's depreciated if we have, we purchase something like that from the three different departments? It would be okay?
You know, yeah, municipality uh accounting, they don't depreciate other than for purposes of, uh, uh.
More of buildings.
But they don't allow tax returns, they don't do that.
Unfortunately, they bought that, don't need one more thing to do. But, so they do um depreciation on water, sewer and all. Um, at least because they're their business, the price funds. And they just told us, we've, we've said, they recommended years ago, maybe we could set it higher now, five thousand is a threshold. If they just told us anything, five thousand or more, just charge it to the capital outlay so they can find it easily and. Right, right, because that's ultimately. And just as a line item, stopping it, we can exist, just so they can find it. And don't have to start to and ask the specifics on the other line item.
Capital improvements technically, which golf can call it that, it's what they put in if they want, but
That would be the big one.
state budgetized, that is, it's real estate and things attached to real estate, right, you're building a pool, you're building a building.
Right, if we put a certain amount into the pool as far as repair, that means.
Some of it can be an exception off of our um restricted funds. But if you, I don't know, if you don't do it, then you have to, you get that much less restricted funds the next year. And so they're really caution people to, to make sure.
Because it's talking about. Changing access value or something along those lines, maybe, another qualifier.
So, anyway.
Wonderful, do you have any other questions or concerns that we've not covered yet?
I do not.
Okay. We can go ahead and close off, gentle. If everybody is, it's a very set and okay for this evening. I would take that motion to adjourn, Dean, second. Paige, roll call.
Dean.
Yes.
And Gaston.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seven forty-two.
Seventy-two years.